Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the February 26, 2019 meeting. Can we have roll call, please?
Chair Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Lavra.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Lard.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
All right. It's good to see so many people here tonight. Do the commissioners have any special reports for us? Do we want to go down the line or anybody? Okay. So, at this point, we're going to turn it over to staff for comments, but I kind of want to mention to everyone, this is a big development. There's been a lot of history here. Staff's going to go through this history with us. And so, we are going to take public comment, but if you could be patient and let us get through the background history on the development, we'd appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Good evening. Alan Giffen, Planning Director. And tonight is a public workshop on proposed amendments to the master plan for the riverfront redevelopment. And I do have a number of slides to run through today or this evening, and so, but if you do have questions, as I'm making the comments here, please feel free to ask those. I want to point out that we do have a team from Shelter Holdings here tonight. They're not planning to make a presentation, but are certainly interested in answering any questions that you have. We have Gary Young, Eric Evans, Tia Heim, Renee Lozama, and their architect, and I've forgotten your name.
John.
So, yeah, he's also here with the team from Shelter Holdings. So, we'll have them say a few things probably later on during the presentation. So, we'll just launch right into this. So, the riverfront, in this first slide, the riverfront redevelopment area is along the Snohomish River on the right-hand side of the screen. It's approximately two miles' worth of land along the Snohomish Riverfront. And in context with the rest of the city, you can see downtown Everett in the upper center of the picture, obviously the waterfront over to the upper left, and I-5 just to the west of the property. And it consists of three properties, but the, let me back up, three properties. We've got the Simpson property to the south. We have the Eclipse Mill property to the north. And then, what we're focusing on tonight is the landfill property, which is the piece in the center of the riverfront district. And this is probably the most challenging piece of property in the city to develop for a number of reasons. First of all, before any settlement in Everett, the property was primarily a peat bog, which means it's soft soils, very unstable soils, but so it happened after settlement that it made a great place for people to dump the garbage because it would sink out of sight. And for years, it was the city's municipal solid waste landfill. It closed in 1974, but with a solid waste landfill, you get methane gas and settling over time as the garbage decomposes. And then, of course, in 1984, 35 years ago, the infamous Everett Tire Fire happened, and the tires that were on the property that the city still owned, but leased to a private company, burned for several months before they burned themselves out. The fire department couldn't get the tires to stop burning. And so, that left behind a lot of contamination within the property and a lot of toxics that went into Snohomish River. And the city had quite a job to clean it up. I won't go into all of that background, but jump forward a few years here. And planning decisions that the city has made on this property, and again, at the top of the screen, north is to the right, this is the Eclipse Mill site here, the landfill property in the center, this triangular-shaped property, and then the Simpson property located on the south. In 1994, in our growth management comprehensive plan, our first comp plan adopted under Growth Management Act, we had articulated a vision for the shoreline, just really instead of calling for continued industrial or municipal use as it had been in the past, the vision was to create a mixed-use area for redevelopment with a setting like that along the Snohomish River. In 2002, the shoreline master program updated and refined that vision and called for, on the landfill property, the development of what was called a lifestyle entertainment center. In 2004, the city asked for proposal or qualifications from a developer to plan, master plan, and redevelop the entire site. In 2009, the original master plan for the riverfront was adopted by the city council for all three parcels. And in 2014, the plan was amended for the Simpson property and the Eclipse Mill site. And at that time, the city acknowledged that the property owner was likely to make plans to refine the master plan for the landfill site. So, the 2009 riverfront master plan had a concept for housing on the Simpson property, a variety of housing types. Called for townhouses on the Eclipse Mill site, and a mixed-use development in here, and not so much with any residential, but mostly a mix of uses, including retail primarily with some big boxes, a theater, a hotel, an office building, but mostly retail along a center spine road that meandered through the development. The concept for that time also included, we like to, we often think about this as being three properties, but actually, there were, the fourth component to the master plan was the public amenities and the public properties, or the open space areas and recreational amenities that you see in the green shading there. Because there are a lot of wetlands and habitat areas there, there was a great opportunity for the city to expand trails and create a park. And in this location, right here, is a proposed three-acre riverfront park. So, part of the public amenities plan that was incorporated into the riverfront master plan included the park, relocating the railroad tracks out of the center of some high-quality wetlands, and about 78 acres' worth of wetland and habitat restoration, as well as about two and a half miles of new public trails were either constructed or are planned to be constructed. So, we'll talk about that in just a little bit more here. So, in this view of the 2009 master plan, you can see the public amenities area, environmentally sensitive areas highlighted in the green and yellow colors. And so, the develop, urban development would occur and has occurred on the Eclipse Mill site, where there are 190 townhouses. And on the Simpson site, again, this is the old 2009 plan, but it will ultimately have 235 single-family detached dwellings. The city approved the original master plan under a zoning tool that we call the Plan Development Overlay Zone. And the purpose of that zone is to allow for some flexibility and creative master planning. And in the original 2009 master plan, there were some development standards that were allowed to be modified under the, that the underlying zoning would have otherwise required through this master planning process. And the basis for approving a master plan and modifying the otherwise applicable development standards is that the plan must provide some public benefits. And there certainly were public benefits in the public amenities plan. And so, as well as the, the public amenities, the master plan approved for greater building height than the underlying waterfront commercial zoning would otherwise allow. The, it also established a number of development standards and design guidelines that apply to the development of all of the properties, including the landfill site. And so, now that brings us to the current proposal. And this, this graphic shows the landfill site in the center here with the proposed master plan superimposed over the site. It has the revised plan for the Simpson property and the revised plan, you can't see it very well underneath the shading, but for the townhouses. And this, again, is the site of the three-acre park. Now, the proposed master plan, here's a little bit more detail, and you've got some handouts that you've been provided that have this information. It is to be a, developed in about six phases. To the right-hand side, again, we have the north at 36th Street. That's the north property boundary. You can see the 41st Street overcrossing comes down from I-5 down to this traffic circle. The Simpson, or overlook at the Simpson property is the single-family detached neighborhood off to the south. And so, there are six phases of development proposed. In phase one, the, well, let me back up just a second and talk about the road through the development. This is, would be the main street that is slightly realigned from the original master plan, and it would be connected up to 36th Street and over to Eclipse Mill Parkway where the townhouses are located. And the first phase of development will include a specialty grocery store and a theater and four buildings that will be mixed-use, of the upper five floors being residential apartments and the ground floor being retail and amenity space for the housing above. The second phase would be to the north. It will have a medical office building as part of that and two more residential buildings. Phase three will include two more residential buildings. And I should have pointed out in phase one that there is a public plaza that will be developed in front of this theater. That'll be a major focal point for the development. And in phase three, it'll be extended further to the east, up to the east side of the property toward the Snohomish River. Fourth phase will have three more mixed-use buildings. Phase five, two more mixed-use buildings plus a, looks like what would probably be a drive-through coffee stand of some sort here down at the south end, but you'll have to wait for phase five for that one. And then, in phase six, 250-room hotel and up to 100,000 square feet of office space. And so, that's kind of an overview of the proposal, getting a little bit more detail here. And I think I covered most of these points. Oh, I didn't mention the number of units would be 1,250 when it's all built out, which differs from the current site plan, which had no housing shown on the site plan, although that master plan would have allowed for up to 400 housing units on the landfill property. The conceptual plan that had been approved did not show any housing. So, there would be also, with a lot of the exhibits that are attached to the development agreement, a number of changes that I have not provided to you. And I will give you, probably within the next few days, they're all available on our website, so you may have seen some of them if you've searched the website. But this first meeting was just to give you more of an overview and history and not to overwhelm you with all the project details. But there'll be plenty of time for that between now and March 26. So, again, I mentioned it'll be a phased development concept with the Riverfront Boulevard being kind of a main street with the ground floor retail all oriented toward that street. The street, and I'll back up here just a couple of steps. The street will have one travel lane in each direction, though it's not a major thoroughfare. It's intended to be oriented toward the development and not something that would be a bypass for traffic coming off of I-5 to get around a congested freeway system. And it would have landscape medians in the middle and parking on both sides of the street to create more of a traffic calming effect through the design of the street. The street will also be built from the current terminus of the roundabout all the way up to 36th Street with phase one of the project. Even though they don't need that much street to serve phase one, the purpose would be to allow for a connection for the townhouses to get down to 41st Street and the overpass here. At times, the traffic is blocked by the railroad trains at Pacific Avenue, so this is something that would create an improved circulation situation for people living in the townhouses. I think I've covered all of these points of the, the main features of the proposed amended development plan. And a couple of other things I haven't mentioned that are also going to be benefits to the public, and that is, the three-acre park that I showed earlier is, in the original agreement with the previous developer who Shelter Holdings bought the property from, was on the city's side of the ledger. The city was on the hook to build the three-acre park. And Shelter has offered as part of this agreement with the city to build the park, the three-acre park, as well as repair about a 200-foot section of the trail on the east side of the Simpson property that has had some, some challenges and needs to be rebuilt. And so, those are two other public benefits that are coming out of the city's responsibility and onto the developer. One of the changes that's proposed is the overall permitted building height on the landfill site. This is, graphic shows the currently permitted building heights, and unfortunately, the yellow script doesn't show up very well, but you can see the area that's encompassed by this blue dash line allows up to 100 feet tall, 100-foot tall buildings on about, oh, roughly 40% to 50% of the site. And then, the remaining area encompassed by the yellow dash line allows for 65-foot building height. Nothing would change on the Simpson or the Eclipse Mill sites, but the proposal here would be to have one standard for the entire site, which would be 75 feet. Where you see that it says plus 10 feet on each of these slides in the previous slide, that would still remain the case that the building itself would be allowed to go to 75 feet, but then, certain building appurtenances such as an elevator shaft or stair tower would be able to go above that. But the buildings are intended to be not more than six stories and up to 75 feet tall at the, at the highest. We do have some view-impact graphics that have been prepared. And on the right-hand side, you can see the currently permitted building height of 100 feet is approximately that high in the graphic. And this was used in the environmental impact statement produced back in 2008, and the revised slide used the same base photograph. And this shows what that would look like at 75 feet from a vantage point on 37th Street near the Everett Memorial Stadium, if you were looking to the east. So, slightly less view-impact from a reduced building height in that location. This is a similar graphic. The original EIS had this graphic where it showed the 65-foot building height off to the right here and the 100-foot building height off to the left side of the center. And the revised building heights, they don't have labels on them, but this would be the 75-foot high potential for the residential buildings on the landfill property. So, in some cases, a little bit taller than the 65 feet that currently is permitted in other portions of the site, less than the 100 feet that would be permitted under the current development agreement. One more vantage point, and that just is something that shows from up in the neighborhood, Port Gardner neighborhood, oh, just north of 41st Street, looking to the east. And you can see the 65-foot building height in this location, these two locations where it would be up to 75 feet under the proposal. And from this vantage point, it's, I guess my observation is that there's not a whole lot of change that you can perceive from, from those locations. One of the key features of the development, really the, the main, the heart of the development is the, what are labeled as the public plaza and the central gathering space. I mentioned that in the first phase, and you can see this drawing is, shows the location of the theater, out in the front of the theater to the east, would be the public plaza that will be developed in phase one. This blue line here shows the break between phase one and two to the right. And under phase three would be the central gathering place that would extend the plaza further to the east, near the upper shoulders of the sloping portion of the landfill site with a view out towards Snohomish River and the valley. And this shows kind of a conceptual layout of what that would look like. It would have the opportunity for adjacent restaurants or retail stores to have outdoor seating or outdoor activities. And the next slide shows some potential types of treatments that could be used for landscaping, for some hardscape areas, some activities such as a farmer's market or concert, craft fairs, a number of different types of gatherings. This is really going to be the focal point around the development. You'll have the theater at one end, the view to the river at the opposite east end, and probably, I would imagine, restaurants and primarily restaurants on the ground floor in this area here, but other retail uses as well. The conceptual images of what type of lightings, lighting or furnishings could be used, these are just some sample drawings that have been provided with the packet. And so, these aren't actually proposed graphic or fixtures, but a concept of what those could look like. So, I've talked a little bit about the phases, and I won't go into every one of these lines here, but again, the first phase would be the largest phase with 295 dwelling units, the theater, specialty grocery. And then, later phases would be the, mostly housing, the majority of the building area would be housing. And the sixth phase would be when the 250-room hotel, 100,000-square-foot office building could be or would be developed. So, there's a little bit of a blow-up of phase one. And the drawings in the remainder of the package in the PowerPoint, whoops, didn't mean, really are just showing these buildings. And you can see the, when we get to those, the, just kind of following the progression from the grocery store up the main street, then looking back down toward the theater and then around the backside. So, those renderings are intended to be attachments to the design guidelines that will be part of your next meeting packet and some of the changes that are proposed there, which are very, very minimal in terms of the, the changes that are proposed. I'll talk about a couple of those as we go along here. So, this first rendering would be of the specialty grocery. And you can see the sign above the roof there, and that's one of the changes that is proposed to the development standards under the current code. Rooftop signs are not permitted, but this is something that the developers would like to use. It's kind of reminiscent of either the Central Market in Mill Creek Town Center or the Public Market down at Pike Place, that type of rooftop signage. And so, that's one of the changes that's proposed to the development agreement. There'll be another one in a moment for the theater, but just continue along here, moving a little bit further north. The building on the left side of the street or the west side of the street, and this is the concept of the landscape median. Now, you'll notice that there are no trees in the median and that the trees that you see along the side of the sidewalk there are in raised pots. And there's a reason for that, and that is that, under our consent decree with the Department of Ecology, we cannot have trees planted in the soil because they, because of the unsteady nature of the, the dirt, the trees get top-heavy and can sink into the soil. Now, all these buildings are going to be pile-supported, so they're not going to go anywhere, but we won't see a lot of large trees on this site, but you will see lower-growing landscaping in the medians and along all of the landscape areas that are within parking areas and surrounding buildings. But no large trees, just because the site will not support the weight of such large trees. And so, this is moving a little bit further to the north, the second building, I believe, north of the market. This would be the third building as you move north. And the fourth building that wraps around the corner with the public plaza and the theater to the, to the right, all of these are, again, phase one designs for the, the buildings. This is the proposed cinema at the west end of the plaza, and again, with the proposed rooftop sign, which is one of the amendments to the development agreement that's proposed. This is coming back, if you were standing in front of the theater and looking back to the southeast, that building that abuts the plaza, and then coming around to the west side, on the west side of the buildings where you'll have the parking. So, on both sides of the development, the buildings will hug the street, will be oriented toward the pedestrian on that main boulevard winding through the site. On the backside of either side of the street, the parking areas will be located. And again, continuing back around the backside here until we get back down toward the market building. So, those are the renderings, three-dimensional drawings. These are the building elevations and examples of proposed materials that would be used. And so, they propose a number of different types of materials, including masonry, wood, metal panels, hardy boards, concrete masonry units, and a lot of glass at the street level. You can see the windows on the sides of the buildings. There'll be generously sized windows on all of the residential units. So, that's it for the graphics, but the criteria that you must use under our Plan Development Overlay Zone to approve either the original master plan or an amendment to the master plan are, the reason that it's in front of the planning commission, you know, minor amendments can be approved administratively, but anything that involves rearrangements of lots, blocks, buildings, tracks must be reviewed by the city council following a recommendation from the planning commission. And those amendments can be made only if they are shown to be in the best long-term interests of the community. And so, the responsibility for the planning commission is to ask and, and I guess answer the question, do the master plan changes meet the criteria for the Plan Development Overlay Zone? And in reviewing those criteria earlier, most of those really don't read like the type of criteria that determine whether or not there's public benefit, or really talks more about, I guess, the, the elements that are included in the site plan. But the most relevant criteria is the public benefit that is derived by allowing the proposed alteration of development standards, is it development worthy of allowing those changes in development standards? And so, again, the public benefits really don't change much from the original public amenities plan. I mean, they don't change at all from the plans that have been approved. The main change difference is that Shelter will take on the responsibility for the three-acre park and that they'll also take on some of the city's cost to repair the trail on the east side of Simpson. Other public benefits with this plan is that we know that the plan that was approved prior to the recession, prior to the way all of our shopping habits have changed since 2009 with the original master plan, that the retail center is not a financially viable project. Just, retail's changed dramatically in the last decade or so. And so, this project with a mix of housing as well as more specialty-type retail, entertainment, restaurants, is a viable project. So, some of the benefits that come with that will be the fact that we'll get development down there instead of it being a large, empty piece of property waiting for the right time and the right thing to happen. The developer will build the entire road with phase one. The developer will build the entire road with Phase One. It'll create a new mixed-use and walkable neighborhood, and the changes that are proposed will still, are not significant changes to the development standards, design guidelines, such that it would at all diminish the quality of the project. In fact, the proposed elevations are an improvement over what we've had before, which were just photographs of other things that were concepts. These are actually proposals that, of the type of architecture that's proposed with this first phase of development. The three-acre park located just to the north and east along the river, this is the original plan that was part of the public amenities plan, and this will be built in a couple of phases, but the majority of it will be built with Phase One of development, so that will occur and be ready by the time Phase One opens for occupancy. This is a stretch of about 200 feet of trail. It's more of an engineering drawing than an architectural drawing, but it shows about 200 feet of trail that needs to be repaired, and Shelter will be taking on that for the city. And so for our next steps, we'll have a public hearing four weeks from tonight. That's a potential decision meeting if the commission is comfortable with the changes and the master plan. And so I will provide in the next few days, at least, hard copies of the materials that are available on the website. A lot of the background materials that are on the website are not going to be things I'll be providing you in your pack. I'll just provide with you the application materials, which include amendments to the development agreement and some of the exhibits to that development agreement. But you can find more information on the city's website, go to Planning and Community Development page, and click on Riverfront Development, and you'll find lots of background documents like environmental impact statements and addenda that have been issued to those statements over the years, and a number of other related background materials. So for tonight, what we want to be able to do at the end of this evening is make sure that you have all of the information that you need, or if you don't have it tonight, what can we bring you, provide for you between now and March 26th, so that you're more prepared to possibly take action that evening. We'd like you to take public comments tonight, and we'd like to answer any questions that the public may have, and I imagine that Shelter will probably be able to answer a lot of the questions that I probably can't. And just, you know, any further direction that you have for us between tonight's meeting and your decision meeting in a month, we just want to make sure that you're prepared. So with that, I'll pause and see if you have any questions for me.
Does anybody have questions? Commissioner Zalinski?
Actually, I have an observation and a question. The observation is that, one thing that I didn't see in the materials anyway, but that I think is a plus for the new proposal, is that the additional housing units in the plan will enable the city to perhaps more closely reach the population growth targets that it has under the growth management plan. So that wasn't mentioned, but I think it merits being mentioned. The question has to do with traffic. There's a big trade-off here between commercial traffic generation and residential traffic generation, and I'm wondering if the staff or the developer has made an analysis of the changes in the traffic demands.
Yes, and that's one of the items that I have not yet provided you, but it is on our website. There's a traffic memorandum from the developer's traffic engineer that talks about the original, originally-approved master plan and the traffic volumes that would be generated based on the changes here. The, and I won't, without having that in front of me, I won't try to characterize it, but I did talk briefly with Commissioner Labra before the meeting, and I think I have a little bit more research to do to clarify something that was in the, one of the SEPA documents. But there is information there. I will provide that for you in a hard copy, and it is available on the website, and perhaps Shelter will like to talk a little bit about that this evening.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lark?
I'm just curious if you could speak to, I know we're increasing the number of units of housing there, but what sort of affordable housing incentives are currently in place in that area? Could you speak to that, Alan?
Well, there are none in place in that area. One of the things that Shelter is requesting of the city, and it's not something that the planning commission has a role in, it's really more for the city council, but that would be to apply the city's multifamily property tax exemption to this property, which would allow for, and actually require for, the 12-year property tax exemption to provide at least 20 of the, 20% of the housing units, meeting a definition of affordable, which would include housing at 80% of the area median income and below. For the 20%, we, our code requires to be split so that at least 10% for that demographic, and 10% at 115% of area median income and below. So it could be more than, than 20%, but at a minimum, 20% of the housing units would have to meet that definition of affordable under the state act and the city's local ordinance that implements that program.
And just if I could do a follow-up, you know, is it within the scope of the conversation to see if we can take some of the incentives that we've applied to the metro area and see if we expand that to other places? Is that within the scope of this particular review?
Well, in thinking of the incentives, you know, most of those are business incentives. The only housing incentive that we have in the metro plan in addition to the property tax exemption would be some bonuses to get greater height at this, at this project and the construction type that is proposed. It's probably not financially viable to go to greater heights to get more density, just because you get into a much more costly construction type, and that probably would not be viable for the economics of the project.
Roger that. Thank you, Alan.
I had a comment. Commissioner, again?
Well, I wanted to thank the city for their huge undertaking of cleaning up this site. I think that that can be a real point of pride for our community, and something that's a really valuable asset to give us back this waterfront that was previously abused. But it does seem like this development could be a nice way of honoring that effort and really giving us a place to enjoy the waterfront. I did notice on, on page three, it's, it calls out the specific community benefits as being the substantial amount of public open space, trails, parks, and environmental restoration. And I did see on your site plan the significant open green space and the trails. I am wondering if the development itself is responding to that necessarily, or those elements sort of seem to be on the periphery. And I'm seeing a lot of parking area interfacing with those areas, where I'm wondering if there could be some kind of inclusion of that park space and the walking trails and that open space in such a way where they're more activated by the commercial area instead of, you know, it looks to me from the plan like the commercial area is sort of turning its back on those spaces, which to me is a little bit of a safety concern. I don't think that I would use that walking trail necessarily, walking, walking past a parking lot instead of a plaza or, or a space that was really, that felt like there were eyes on it. The playground is a great addition to this development, and I'm excited to see that, that happen for those housing areas. But I do wonder if the location of the playground would be utilized as well as it would be if it were sort of included in the activity of, of this commercial area. I think, you know, if you were designing a house, you would put all of your, like your kitchen, your dining room, your living room on your waterfront to enjoy that spectacular natural resource. And if you were designing your garden and your patio, you wouldn't put it, you know, like in a side yard in the shade. You'd really put it there on that waterfront so that it could be enjoyed and used, and this is just at a much bigger scale, but, you know, people just, people operate the same way no matter the scale. I think that using that incredible resource that we have, that waterfront, could be a really compelling reason to connect, you know, the walking trail, the park, and that exciting plaza concept with maybe some kind of esplanade along the riverfront, and shift, shift the balance of parking elsewhere in the development and the site. But overall, I think this is a really exciting concept. I think it's a really big deal for this, for this area, and I'm excited to see how it, how it continues to progress and develop. But those were my thoughts looking at it, that maybe these green spaces are being underserved by the development itself, and they could really be something spectacular if they were integrated a little bit more into the fabric of what was happening there.
I've got a couple of comments, and I think I'll ask Shelter probably to talk a little bit more about the conditions of the site and building conditions in particular, and pilings, and the depth of the, to get to the supporting earth underneath the site, which is shallower to the west and much more costly to drive pilings to the east. There is a trail that exists along the, what used to be railroad bed here, and it, there's been wetland and stream recreation, restoration in this area. The trail continues further up to 36th Street where the park will be. And the park will be here on the riverfront, and the intent is so that we have a park next to the river and not closer in toward the freeway or, you know, where people would want a park to be, or be able to enjoy the view from the park to the site. Also, in the original vision is stated in the Shoreline Master Program, at that time the city council wanted abundant parking, and that was the word that they used, abundant parking for this development. And so it might be, you know, more parking than our code would require, but there, there's a reason for why these footprints of the buildings, again, are small, and that is to minimize the number of pilings that are being driven to support the buildings, and the parking lots do not require that. So a couple of, I guess, reasons for why this design is like that, but I'll let Shelter talk to, more about that later.
I think that the inclusion of parking is huge, because, you know, you are removed from, you'd have to drive here to experience the theater or go to the restaurants. I'm imagining myself, if I'm making an excuse to come here, you know, if I can go to the grocery store and, you know, take the kids to the park and have lunch, you know, I'm going to want to park once and walk to do those things. I am wondering if, you know, there's, I'm not a developer, but I know that there are sneaky ways where developers can shoehorn parking in, you know, where it's a little less visible, a little less part of the pedestrian experience, but that does remind me of another thing. When I looked at this, I thought, you know, those heavy hitters, like the grocery store, places where there's going to be a lot of foot traffic and people are going to be coming here for that purpose, maybe those things could be pulled into the center of the development a little bit more to activate that public space more. I think, you know, drawing people in to, to do their grocery shopping, they'll be more inclined to then go next door and get some lunch and sit in the plaza. I think if the plaza experience was drawn a little bit more toward the waterfront, all the better. You have lunch with a view and some sunshine. You know, I think if those buildings on the south edge of the plaza are 100 feet, even 75 feet, you're going to experience some deep shade in that plaza, the whole length of it. That's not somewhere where I would want to have lunch, except for maybe in the hottest day of August, but I think that conceptually, it's really exciting. I'm just thinking, maybe there are a few tweaks that could happen to maximize the usability of it, but so far, so good.
Alex?
Oh, I have a quick follow-up question. Sorry. I answer to both. So I noticed in like EMC 19.29.21, looked at the code, and they're talking about the, like I've been looking at the 2009 master plan, I'm also looking at the, the master plan revision, and I noticed they're very, very similar in the footprint, and I saw there was an increase, you know, there was a stipulation, no authorization by the section may cause any of the following, one of which is an increase in the overall ground coverage of the structures. I mean, is that, would that be a constraining element to, you know, what could potentially go here? I mean, I know the initial PDO asked for abundant parking, and it seemed, and that sounds like it constrained the footprints of the building, you know, is that, are we kind of, are we constrained by those criteria that are no longer applicable to what we need in this city?
Well, that, I believe that's a section out of the Plan Development Overlay Zone that talks about administrative modification of, of a site plan, or a master plan. And there are certain things that I, as the planning director, could approve on a master plan amendment, but some of the criteria that, that are stated in there, like creating greater building coverage, is not one of the things that can be administratively approved. This plan does not increase the building footprint compared to the previous master plan. It changes the configuration significantly. You had several big box stores in that conceptual plan, but this plan has a more contained footprint and more vertical construction.
Okay. But if we wanted to open it up for conversation, to talk about expanding the footprint, that would be something within the commission's realm, or that city, be city council's purview?
Well, I think it's probably something you ought to start with the developer to talk about that.
All right, yeah. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Commissioner?
Question, talking about abundant parking. It occurs to me, and maybe I'm wrong, that moving from more, from less of commercial to adding extra residential would change the dynamic of the, not only the traffic, but also parking needs. It appeared to me that at least the most of the parking for the residential areas would all be surface, in the same area, the same lots, there's not going to be parking under the buildings or...
That's correct.
How many parking spaces total? That's a question for Shelter, all these are planned for all of that. What are we, what are we talking with abundant parking as far as for units? I saw there was mention in the, in your memo about reducing off-street parking for residential units from 1.5 to 1.2. Is that a significant change from what was previously, I guess, what does that mean in like real numbers and actual on the ground?
Sure. No, it's a good question. The, the change that's proposed is a parking standard that is in the current development agreement that would require one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit for multifamily housing. The concept behind this development, being that it is mixed-use, is to have shared parking. If this was entirely residential development, then you'd have peak periods being, you know, in the evenings when, when people were at home and, and where you have, during the daytime, people are gone, but there's more people shopping. And so you have this shared use of parking, which our code does encourage and allow. And so in reviewing this with the city engineer, traffic engineer, and the amount of parking that is provided, if it's in a shared configuration like that, reducing the multifamily standard doesn't really impact the overall demand. The supply is sufficient for all of the housing units as well as the commercial units, uses. There's some off-peak, at off, excuse me, opposite peak demand uses there. The theater and the housing definitely are there same time of the evening, but you'll have, for example... have, for example, a medical office building that, uh, was gonna be primary during, during the daytime and retail uses, many of which will be, uh, uh, open or pri- primarily, uh, daytime grocery store, for example, where you have more, uh, people, uh, shopping, you know, before the, uh, later evening hours. And so, uh, the amount of parking, uh, it's not, in, in the city's opinion, and the traffic engineer who, uh, hired, or Shelter hired, the amount of parking, uh, will work pretty well with that, uh, shared arrangement. If this was, uh, an apartment building on a separate site and a retail building on a separate site, then each of them would have to park that at a maximum demand period. When you have, uh, the same, different uses sharing the same reservoir of parking, then there's a lot more flexibility for how that can be managed and...
And I'm just wondering, just, maybe it's addressed in the parking study, 'cause I see now you have people who reside there, who be prepared for parking, people who are shopping there, but if we're adding some of these public amenities, there may be people who are just coming to, you know, enjoy the park, enjoy the plaza, that sort of thing. So kind of three separate uses, and I'm just wondering, if you got it, you've got, everybody living there already taking up spaces, is that gonna kind of push out maybe s- some of those people who might become, wanna come just to enjoy the, you know, the, the atmosphere? So be it, or, or activities that might be going on in those open spaces?
Well, uh, that possibility does exist. That's one reason why the council years ago wanted to use the word abundant parking, because they anticipated there'd be public demands above and beyond the needs generated by the, the land uses here. Uh, we don't design our parking for, um, you know, the, to provide every possible parking space that somebody could demand at peak period, like, you know, Christmas Eve shopping at a, at a mall or something like that. And so, uh, it's, it's a balance that, uh, the developer will have to, uh, uh, just provide, you know, parking that A meets our code and, and B meets the anticipated demand, but the amount of parking provided here does exceed what our code requires, and some of that would be anticipated for the, the public demand, that people would come and use the waterfront, uh, trail or a park, uh, in addition to, uh, people who'd be parking to use the businesses or live in the site.
I wanted to ask one of the questions, I saw some mention in, things in your memo about, uh, access for public transit as well, that was being accounted for at some, at some place.
Yeah, and that's...
Talk about that a little bit more, maybe, on?
At our next meeting, I think I'll, I'll have to do that. I don't, I'm not prepared to talk about it. I know that Shelter's been talking with Everett Transit about that, and I don't know, uh, the most up-to-date, uh, specifics for that, but this will be served by transit.
And I, I guess the question I was also, is what, I thought that I understood it, that transit would, would come to a spot on the area, but wouldn't necessarily be going up and down that main, that main road, but I, maybe for the next meeting, I'd just be curious and maybe hearing a little bit more about?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get information to you ahead of the next meeting, but, uh, I don't have that information tonight.
I had one thing to add about parking. Um, I'm reminded of the building in our downtown area, the Arrow Apartment Building, where, uh, parking for residents is integrated into the parking structure, into the building structure itself in such a way that it doesn't scream parking structure. It's a little bit more disguised, but it does accommodate for parking for the residents specifically. I don't think that you can just park in there if you're, you know, parking downtown to go to dinner. Um, but that might be an interesting concept to, um, show in a schematic of how you might, um, accommodate for, for that and also maybe limiting some of the surface area parking.
I'll, uh, allow Shelter to talk about that.
Alan, question. Um, is there an expiration for the master plan at present, and if the revision is adopted, will, will there be an expiration?
There is, um, a timeframe, you know, assuming that this plan is amended, uh, at some point this year, then, uh, the plan is, uh, good for three years before they have to, the developer has to submit a, uh, final development plan. That can be extended for a year, uh, and that is something that, uh, the final development plan would have to be submitted, perhaps even before, you know, they're ready to build it out. But, uh, that, that does put some, uh, uh, pressure on the developer just to, you know, keep things moving. And so those can be extended by, uh, if, if, if they don't file a final development plan within the three years or extended an extra year or the fourth year, then they would have to come back with a planning commission and city council to just extend that. Uh, I would imagine that the final development plan, if, imagine that coming in, you know, four years from now, it would probably, uh, reflect, uh, any minor changes that they may have made in their thinking in the, uh, subsequent four years, uh, but, uh, it would probably look much like the, uh, concept plan. If it had to be, if it was much different, then they'd have to be coming back through a public process.
Okay. And is there a preliminary schedule for the various phases?
I'm gonna let Shelter talk about that. I don't know what the, uh, exact dates are.
Okay. And then what will the condition of the, um, the phases two through six be, uh, while phase one is being built out and finished? So how will the land be held when it's not being developed?
The condition of the property, that's, um, I'll ask Shelter to address that one too.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Zelensky?
I just have one more question that, I don't know if you can answer it, Alan, or Shelter can, but the, the site plan, of which this is a segment, shows a number of areas that are labeled on the, on the legend as being amenity spaces, and I was just wondering what some of those might be.
Uh, in each of the buildings, there are shown, uh, the, uh, that has housing, uh, there's shown some amenity spaces. So that could be lobby area, recreational area for the residents of the building. It may not, uh, and it, it could, uh, probably, some of it may become retail or, uh, restaurant space if there's enough demand, but the, uh, it's shown as amenity space based upon what the developer anticipates to be the, uh, demand for retail. And of course, you know, those things can, can change over time. But amenity space would be really oriented toward the, uh, housing.
Okay. Two more questions. On, on public benefit, um, the, the boulevard that goes north-south through the site, um, in addition to building the road, are there pedestrian improvements and landscaping that will also occur the entire length or just in that phase one area?
Um, in the phase one area, uh, that's where the majority of the landscaping will be, although there will be median landscaping, uh, in the entire roadway. Uh, and, um, you know, I think I'll ask Shelter to talk about that as well, but, uh, I believe the concept is that all of the median would be built with the road up to Thirty-Sixth Street. But, um, good question, I, I'm not sure, um, you know, if some of the landscaping might be delayed until the second phase.
Okay. And then, again, um, public benefit, will there be connections beyond the, um, the Forty-first Street access, um, and the, the townhouse development, um, Eclipse Site access for pedestrians?
Uh, yes, the, well, when you say beyond the site?
Other than the north and the south, the, those, uh, connections, will there be mid-site connections to the transit area or to downtown?
Not, uh, like over the railroad tracks to the transit station.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Do we have any further questions? Commissioner Tisdale?
I'm good.
All right.
You go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'll have some follow-up questions when they discuss foundations.
Okay. I actually do have some questions. Um, so, and I'm gonna go back, 'cause I'm really trying to understand the history of the site. So the site was purchased in two thousand and eight by another developer, developer for eight million dollars, correct?
Something like that.
Okay. And ninety million dollars over the years had been spent by the city to basically clean up the site.
Not all of it was for cleanup. A lot of it was to serve the property, things like the, um, Forty-first Street overcrossing. We got, uh, quite a bit of federal money to build that grade separation there. And so it wasn't all for cleanup. Some of it was to prepare the area for development, but a lot of it has been for cleanup. A lot of that is out of the solid waste fund, a lot of that was out of grants.
And, and you're kinda getting to the heart of what I'm asking is, so with the eight million dollars, were those clean pads predominantly, or were there gonna, were there any wetlands considerations, were, were setbacks gonna be, other than streets and some park areas? I mean, basically, so there was two hundred and, what was it? Two hundred and twenty-one acres associated with the site?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to the, one of the overall master plan, oh, I'm going the wrong direction, sorry about that. Um, and with the original plan and the plan that we're talking about today, the overall developable area has not changed. It, if you look, and I wanna get to the, the one that has all of the, this one.
And that developable area was a hundred and twenty acres, correct?
Uh, approximately. I think we had roughly seventy-five in the landfill and, I don't remember, thirty-five or something on, uh, Simpson and about ten developable acres, uh, on Eclipse Mill Site. Some of that, uh, does not include road that, or land that is within public right-of-way. So for example, Eclipse Mill Road, I think it was just a net of ten acres, and Simpson, I think it's probably about thirty-five acres. At any rate, I'm not sure I'm following the question beyond, uh, how much?
But for the most part, that's buildable land. There's not gonna be additional setbacks or things, that's a pad in and of itself, and it can be developed.
That's correct. The original pads that were identified, uh, in this master plan, uh, remain the developable pads, uh, today.
So for eight million dollars, a hundred and twenty acres of developable land were purchased, correct?
I think that's about the sale price, something like that, yeah.
Okay. So what I'm trying to understand, and what I was looking at when I was trying to go through the background here, is what are the fiscal impacts of these land use changes? What they're gonna be to the city, um, in terms of, uh, tax revenue generation, expected services and things of that nature? Um, I was digging hard.
Mm-hmm. And there, there was a study that was produced that's obviously outdated now because of all the assumptions were about this being a retail development, and, uh, that information is being prepared for the city council. It's not really part of the land use, uh, uh, decision criteria for, for this plan. It's certainly, uh, the city council as, uh, the sellers of this property and, and the, uh, stewards of our budget, uh, were certainly interested in that. But, uh, you know, a lot of that money is money that would've been spent for the cleanup, even if we just put a barbed wire fence around the landfill and a no trespassing sign on it, there, we would've been into for dozens of millions of dollars.
Right, right. But we're asking for land uses to be changed at this point, and so the only, the reason why I'm looking at this is, does it make fiscal sense to make these land use changes? Is it in the public benefit? Or, do we have the right densities, um, things of that nature?
Um, good question. Under the criteria for the change of the master plan, that's not usually something that we get into for the plan development overlay. That's certainly something that the city council is paying attention to, that information is being prepared. We hadn't anticipated bringing that information to you, but when we do have that, I'll be happy to pass that along.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions here?
Let me ask one follow-up on, um, about the access on the north and south end and no, no midpoint access. There is, there's a railroad track, there's I-5. Is there any opportunity, is that something, I mean, it seems to me it's probably limited to ever think that in the future there'd be an opportunity for other access points?
Across I-5?
Or under, I, yeah, I don't know. It, it, I guess the question is, is there any other opportunity, or is that something that looks like there'd ever be a possibility or an area that could be kind of?
There, there will not be an opportunity, uh, for building, uh, access at grade because of the railroad tracks, and part of the conditions of us getting this federal funding for the extension of Forty-first Street overcrossing was to close the at-grade rail crossing at Thirty-Sixth Street. Used to be you could drive down Thirty-Sixth Street under the freeway and get to the, uh, former landfill site, but, uh, that was closed with the federal funding that we got in part for, uh, uh, to, to separate the, the grade there. And if there, there was at one time, uh, a pedestrian crossing contemplated at Thirty-Sixth Street, kind of going over the railroad tracks and under the freeway, but it got into design, it was just such a horrible environment to put pedestrians that the city abandoned that.
Commissioner Lark?
Just one, uh, follow-up off of that. I mean, like, there is a lot of work underway right now within the Everett Station District Alliance to get a BIA set up, uh, just on the other side of the freeway. Uh, our largest, um, transit center in the city is right there, just, like, within stone's throw of this, uh, development. I mean, like, what can be done to connect that place in a pedestrian manner? Or just to have a better transit, more frequent transit connection?
There will be, uh, frequent transit, uh, between the development and Everett Station.
Okay.
But as far as a, a pedestrian crossing, that's, uh, not proposed.
And then, and how big of a debacle was the, uh, was the pedestrian bridge that you brought up? What was some of, some of the challenges?
Oh, just the environment, your, over railroad tracks, under a freeway, it was dark, it was, uh, very uninviting, very unsafe feeling, and a long way between either end. If you were stuck in the middle there and somebody you didn't wanna tangle with, you were a goner.
All right.
It's pretty, it's pretty cut off.
Exhausted list.
So for, for bicycle and pedestrian traffic, the safest route is on Forty-first?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I was just gonna say, there's a Pacific Street, you know, if you go north through the site, um, through the Eclipse Site to Pacific, there will be, um, access to the station that way. It's not a walking access, but there is access.
And there is a, a trail that, uh, goes, will it be extended, will be extended through the park and connect with the, through the townhouse property ultimately along the, the riverfront. Uh, at some point, it'll have to get back over from the townhouse, uh, side of, the riverside of the townhouses, back over to, uh, Eclipse Mill Road, probably through the next property that develops, but, uh, that does have, uh, very wide roadway and sidewalks as well on, on the, uh, Eclipse Mill Parkway. It's just when you get to Pacific Avenue, you've got railroad crossing that's not real friendly for pedestrians.
I'll say already, the site is pretty friendly for bicycles at least.
Oh, good.
Um, there, there are already bicycle trails in terms of the Forty-first Street going down, and there is a nice trail that you can hook up with. Um, it's part of Lowell Trail, so I actually ride this site a fair amount.
So is the, is there some, a significant connectivity then between the Lowell neighborhood and this development?
Yeah, well, there's already a pedestrian bridge that the city took advantage of, a, a pipe that had to go over the railroad tracks. So Lowell's already connected through a pedestrian bridge. And then on the north end of the site, there's a really nice trail that's underused as we, right now, um, but you can actually move pretty fast and you can, again, bicycle, um, it's great for strolling if you're walking, but, um, it's actually, from a non-motorized perspective, it's already a relatively inviting site.
So there's really long-term potential to connect a lot of these riverfront sites with the rest of Everett. I mean, Lowell and then through this site, and, I mean, we've got a ways to go before you can really get downtown from here, but the potential is there, I think.
I'd actually say that connecting to the riverfront is already there. Um, particularly if you go on the, uh, uh, Snohomish River, Lowell, there's an improved trail that's already there. So you have pretty good access to it. So the site's already relatively accessible from a non-motorized perspective. Uh, it's just long and linear.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but most people are gonna probably be using transit, if they're using it for a regional perspective, they're gonna be doing that, um, from bicycles in a lot of ways. So, um, I, again, I think that the site, um, already has relatively, of course, there's always opportunity for improvement, but, um, the only thing about Forty-first is the timing of the lights. I mean, it's a little sketchy there just 'cause that's a six-point urban interchange and there's a lot of traffic going on.
I, I, I can't say I've ever attempted like a pedestrian or bicycle crossing there. I've always been actually a little afraid to go through in my car. I did, I did drive down just to check out the, the site and see what kind of, um, work had been done on the site so far. And I got down to that roundabout and I was a little relieved to just be kind of out of the fray because it was pretty intense, the lights and the freeway. the fray because it was pretty intense, the lights and the freeway and it's just...
There's definitely a lot going on at that interchange.
I don't, I don't think I've ever attempted it on foot.
Well, from a bicycle perspective, the sidewalks are at least ten feet wide. And that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Is that I can move relatively fast through this, as long as, and people in this area are considerate and they actually do look out for cyclists. But from a, you know, if you're walking it or something like that, it's definitely not that friendly, so.
Madam Chair, can we move to citizen comments?
We can, we need to. We're looking at the clock. So at this time, we're gonna take citizen comments and it looks like we might have more people than who have signed up, but I'm gonna start going through the people who have signed up. And all I ask is that people be considerate because we might have a number of folks who would like to have public comment at this time. And so I'm gonna call up Alex Alexander. Oh, oh, I apologize. We needed to have the developer. We'll, we'll go ahead and hear from Mr.?
Thanks. I'm Alex Alexander. I, and my, and my family have been a neighbor of this Lowell Riverfront for a hundred and forty-five years. We settled right across the river from Lowell in eighteen seventy-three. We've seen every rise in the river, the flood states since that time. I have, myself have seen sixty-six rises and I've had the opportunity and the privilege to write a history of the Lowell Riverfront. And you're all welcome to read it. But in any case, what I'm interested in tonight is what has happened with the river in the past seventy, seventy-seven years and my projections for what will happen in the next fifty years. I have a, a few handouts so you can see what I'm talking about. I'd like Alan to have one. Is there a representative of the developer here?
Yes.
He should have one. And then there's that, I guess, hand, handout. But to make a long story short, the, the river has been behaving in an anthropogenic fashion now since about nineteen forty. In other words, it's a human-oriented river as opposed to a river that has traditionally acted in terms of centuries and millennia. Now, what has happened is the river has basically lost it. If you, for those of you who have a, a handout, you would notice a graphic on page two with, that shows how the, the river levels have, have formed a kind of explosion since nineteen, since nineteen forty. And we've done a, a projection through that showing the mean values progressing on an upward slope over a period of about seventy-seven years. And on page four is actually the most important graphic I've ever made in fifty-five years as a graduate student and professional investigator. It shows, I don't think that you can see it from, from there, but you, it shows a projection to the year, for river, river levels to the year A.D. twenty-one forty-seven. And somewhere around twenty forty, we, it will attain overtopping of all of the coordinated dicking systems. That is, of all thirteen systems will no longer be able to hold out the river, it'll simply come over top. And then we have the problem not of how to keep the river out, but how to get the water out. But that is aside the point, except Everett does have lowland properties in North Marshland. What I've, I've illustrated how it can affect the riverfront project with another graphic. Well, actually, it's a, it's an illustration of the, of the overpass of Bigelow Creek as it comes off Forty, Forty-first Street down the hillside and across Bigelow Creek into the housing development that's already established. Now that housing development has people waiting with bated breath for this other area to be developed. And it would be very good if both of them could, could develop in comfort and in unison. And I think the prosperity of both depends on, on both. But now, that overpass actually was, was constructed as a blockage. What I think will happen when we attain about year two thousand thirty-five to two thousand fifty, you will have a blockage of, at that site of the overpass. And you will have a diversion as shown by the arrows here of water around the overpass and, and through the housing development. That has happened before in my grandparents' days with the Everett Monte Cristal Bridge cross Snohomish River there. You'd have trash backups, chass dams and backups of two to three elevation higher on the Lowell side. And I believe this will happen again unless something is done about that overpass. And, and I've shown, there's another illustration, what is being done on Highway Two. They simply bring out the suitable equipment, park it on the bridge and keep lifting trash out of the dam to encourage the water flow. I, I don't know if you've seen this picture. I, I think you can probably make it out from there, but that kind of equipment certainly would be, would be necessary. But I think better still would be a reconstruction of, of that, of that overpass. Now, there's one other point I'd like to mention. We have an impending cascadeous abduction. That is, and I've illustrated it here with, with tectonic plates, the, the Pacific Plate very gradually sliding under the North American Plate. It's moving at about the, the rate of speed of, of a fingernail growth, but over a period of several centuries, there's a, a lot of tension builds up. When it slips, there are enormous earthquakes and tsunamis. The last one was in A.D. seventeen hundred, January of seventeen hundred, and it's, it's long overdue. We have evidence of what the last one did locally, at least right across the river from their development, actually across the river and slightly north. You have photographs here of, on a stream low tide, a sunken spruce stump. This is itgr spruce, becomes visible only on extreme low tides. Now, the, the man standing on that remnant is five foot, ten inches. You give him six feet, if he raised that stump by six feet, it still wouldn't, wouldn't be able to grow. It's a land plant and it needs, it would have needed another two feet, at least, at least eight feet subsidence occurred at the last, at, at the last subduction. Now, I understand there are maps being made to illustrate areas that are, would be threatened by the big one when it comes. But I've never seen any map that shows more than about two and a half, never more than three feet elevation change. You should note that it should, it should be possible for at least eight feet subsidence and, and possibly more. And I offer that, those photographs as, as a pending evidence.
Mr. Alexander, I'm sorry to be rude, but we have a number of folks that would like to speak. And I unfortunately got a little ahead of myself and didn't have the developer come up and give a brief presentation. This information is fascinating and very thorough. Could you take another few minutes and hit that?
Well, I can wrap it up in one minute.
Okay. Thank you.
If, I would say this, it looks like in fifty years, we have from evolution of the river about another two and a half feet and from subsidence at least eight feet. We're looking probably in the order of twelve to fourteen-foot higher elevations within about fifty, fifty years. I appreciate the opportunity to present the case because the river will be a, a really a going Jesse at that time and complete with, with logs, trees and possibly creating some erosion along the riverfront. But I won't go into any more detail. I wanna thank you for the kind attention and, and the extra time.
Thank you very much. And I'm gonna pause this just for a bit to have the developers come up and present any information you'd like to share with Planning Commission at this time. And perhaps commissioners have some questions of the developers themselves.
For the benefit of the record, my name's Eric Evans. I'm with Shelter Holdings. I'm happy to answer questions. I'm also happy to defer and let some of the public come up and have all their questions and answer those afterwards. We felt, we had a neighborhood meeting with a lot of these people. We got a lot of good input. Our plans have been informed by them, but we're definitely here to listen today. I, so I, it's up to you.
Do any of the commissioners have questions of?
We're here to stay late, so we're...
It might be more helpful if we did hear more public comment before the Shelter had a chance to respond to everybody's comments.
Sure, sure. And so we'll just continue with public comment at this time. And if at any point Shelter feels the need to maybe address a particular question that someone in the, the public has, just feel free to, and we'll pause for a second.
If they have to leave, I'm happy, we're happy to respond, but I appreciate everybody's time, so.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll keep going. Glenn Bachman, could you please come to the podium, state your name and address? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Glenn Bachman, four three three Crown Drive, Everett, Washington. I am a current member of the International Council of Shopping Centers and have been for thirty years. I'm a recently retired shopping center manager. I have been a visiting faculty member at the University of Pennsylvania Wharton School of Business, also a numerous presenter at what ICSC, International Council of Shopping Centers, calls Design Build, and they do it in Arizona. So in, in the past and in, for the beginning of my membership with the International Council of Shopping Centers, large and multi-level shopping centers was the design du jour. In the past five to six years, this exact model is what is being proposed. It's what the industry experts find to be the exact medium right on center, and it's the most successful, those that have been built so far. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity, and if not, you should try to get to the International Council Shopping Centers recon in Las Vegas in May. It's the largest real estate convention in the world. And this particular project, if it were, the model were being exhibited anywhere, they would already be winning awards. One of the things that happens to be interestingly, a natural phenomena in, in the favor of this project for retail is that the large trees can't be planted. Retailers hate that, it blocks their storefronts. And on storefronts, when they've spent a half a million dollars to have it built and designed and hung, it's a big deal. So there's a number of other items and be careful on designing of the paths. Retailers need to have a direct line of sight. We as shoppers want to be able to see what it is and we're like chickens. If we don't see it, we're not gonna go to it. You want this to be successful both in the housing occupancy and you want it to be successful in the retail because that's where our tax base comes from. I'll stay at thirty thousand feet for the most part, but I will say that this thing looks like a magic in a winter for a tax generator. Thank you.
Barb Barkley? And if I mispronounce anyone's name, my apologies. State your name and address for the...
Good evening. My name is Barb Barkley. I live in the new riverfront community in the single-family homes. I have lived up here for almost two years, moved up from just south of Mill Creek. I love the Mill Creek Town Center. I hate the Mill Creek traffic, absolutely hate going back there right now. Rarely go there. I love living where I live right now because I work in Marysville, fifteen-minute drive, just hop right on the freeway, get up there. I really enjoy living in Everett because I'm close to everything I need. I guess I'm just a little shocked though, since we met in August. We were all super excited in our little community about the opportunities for a central market kind of a store, movie theater. I assume that's what you mean by theater, not like a, an acting theater, okay? Maybe a Trader Joe's, Starbucks, you know, et cetera. We were all super excited when you had the, when we had the meeting last summer. But on the card that was sent in the mail, when I was looking at the tiny writing, it said one thousand two hundred and fifty housing units. So I was anticipating like a Mill Creek Town Center where there's some condos in the back of Pier One parking lot. That's, I'm guessing fifteen hundred cars on one little north-south street with one lane going each way. I don't know how it's gonna impact where I live because we would be at the south end of that, but I think your questions about having a midpoint exit are something that I would be concerned about too. I understand what you're talking about as far as the neighborhood, where that midpoint exit would be. It's not a desirable neighborhood right now, but I, I'm just extremely concerned about traffic, so, thank you.
Thank you. Megan Dunn, could you please come in?
Hi, Megan Dunn. I live at two two one six Main Street in the Lowell neighborhood. It's fun to be on this site again. Originally started off with coming to Planning Commission meetings and then I was a Planning Commissioner for a number of years, so fun to be on the side. Just to give you an idea of the scope of the impact, the Lowell neighborhood is about four hundred homes. So this has a, a big impact on, on the existing neighborhood. And there's, at the, at the time, you know, we came to the meetings when it was sold from Oliver Mill into Polygon and now Shelter. And we definitely, as a neighborhood, do not agree on everything, but we did at the time agree that we would be watching this closely. So at the time, I had also suggested having some clawback policies so that we would make sure to get the revenue that the city needs to cover the, the impact, especially for the impact of single-family homes versus multi, multi-family homes. So I'm not sure if some type of revenue forecasting can be looked at. But I do think that there needs to be a thorough... that there needs to be a thorough market analysis and financial analysis to know the impact. Can the city, you know, can we support three movie theaters now? Because we've got the historic downtown theater, and we've got the one at the mall, and we know historically what happened to downtown when the mall came in, and that now the downtown is rejuvenating, so what kind of impact will this have on the, the rest of the city? And also, I echo the concerns about traffic, because I like to turn right at 41st and Third, and I don't want to turning, going straight and being backed up, but it, it is, you know, right around rush hour, the, that whole area is, can get pretty gnarly, so with the entrance on the expressway and the expressway lights, and then now having, you know, 1,200 cars going, coming home for the night, so, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to take a pause because I have three people who are signed up. Are there going to be more folks that would like to speak tonight? Raise of hands, two? Okay, just checking in. And I'm not sure I can read this hand, is it Dwayne Finch? Did I get that?
Diane Fink.
Diane Fink. I am so sorry. I am so sorry.
Nice try, but no cigar. Diane Fink, my address is 4404 Riverfront Boulevard, and I live in the Overlook Development, the new Overlook Development, right on the main road, and I have a really simple question. I mean, well, I would also say there's also the concern over traffic with, you know, the additional housing for the, for the proposed project, but I also, my, my question really was, I understand there's a meeting on the 26th next month, and then a potential planning commission decision, and if the planning commission makes a decision and makes the recommendation to the city, what timeframe are we looking at? Are we looking at the end of the year?
Do you address that?
Alan Giffen, planning. The, if the planning commission were to take action on March 26th, then we would get it to the city council probably about a month, five weeks later for public hearings.
And then?
And then, yeah, if they make a decision at the public hearing, then it would be, you know, presuming that they approve the amendment, then it would be done, and they, the developer could proceed to the permit stage then.
So we're talking not till June?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the construction schedule would be. I believe they want to be under construction this, build, this dry season, this summer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so Tim Garrett?
My question has been answered, so I'm going to pass.
Okay. Thank you.
In the interest of time.
Thank you. Donna Thornberry, could you come up to the podium?
Hi, my name's Donna Thornberry, and my husband and I reside at 310944 Street at Overlook at the Riverfront. It does have to do with parking, but my concern is not just people coming that don't live in our community, but even the people that live in the towns, when that main road is open, I know that you guys will be taking, coming 41st to avoid the train track. All the people coming from the south to come to this development, once they get caught by the train, they also, all of those people will be coming off of 41st into this development, and I find that to be a bigger problem than just the regular traffic that we expect to come to this development.
Thank you. All right, so I think I saw two or three extra hands. If one of you folks would like to come to the podium, I think we need to have you fill out just your name and your address as well, just because we keep a record of who spoke. That would be great.
Laura, do you want me to fill it out?
You can speak for.
You can fill it out after you speak.
Okay, my name is Laura Young. I just moved into the Towns at Riverfront two and a half weeks ago. One thing I noticed, I want to reiterate the traffic issue because that is really huge. It's huge right now. When we leave going north on Riverfront, we, we're stopped at the train for 15 minutes, 20 minutes, an hour. Going, heading west on Pacific, there's the Pacific Exit that these cars do not stop, and we have to stop here, which is great, except for half of these cars stop and half of these people coming this way and that way don't know that they don't stop, and there needs to be some kind of different configuration at that intersection. And the other thing, the one way in and one way out, that's going to be, it's, I think it's going to impact our style, our lifestyle with all this traffic coming. The Towns at Riverfront have probably this much front yard, a sidewalk, and then a road. So it's really going to impact our lifestyle, having the main road right at our doorstep. What else was I going to talk about? Possibly we could put speed bumps, and that would deter traffic to your neighborhood. So those are main, main concerns of ours. The traffic is huge, one way in and one way out. If you look at the Mill Creek Town Center, they've got many ways in and many ways out, and they still have a lot of traffic on their road, but they've got so much more access. And then a couple more things that I'm going to aim towards Shelter is every other house, maybe every house in the towns has a dog, and there's no dog park or dog entertainment on here. And the other, and the other thing is that the playground is so close to the, where you have, the park is beautiful, but I would really like the playground to be moved up and over, not so close to the townhouses, because I moved there because I retired, and I don't have little kids, and I don't have grandkids, and I don't want little kids in my backyard. I'm sorry, I love kids, but anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you. All right.
Hi, Katrina Lindahl, 2515 East Grand Avenue, and overall, I'm not opposed to a little bit more residential and the medicals and all that, but when this plan was first proposed to the city, it was all about bringing the community to the river, and this plan does not bring the community to the river. I'm going to, I commend what Commissioner McGinn said, and I, all your points to that effect are point on. All that parking on the river doesn't allow people to have that connection. You have, I really feel you need to bring some more of that retail space out to the trails, you know, so you, so you can have a restaurant and sit out on the river and enjoy, or whatever. Also shops, you know, you were supposed to have even retail stores that interact with the river, you know, you can rent a kayak or all that kind of stuff. That was how this was proposed to us, and I don't see this, it's turned into a huge residential neighborhood now, and I understand the concept that you have to have that to bring business to the, to the retail, but I think we've overdone that, the residential part of it a little bit, and also that whole, the whole parking, and just bringing that green space, that connection to green space and the river. Everybody complains we don't have any connection to any of the water here in Everett, both sides, and this is not improving this at all, in my opinion. So, except for that one little spot that you can walk down and look at over a little overlook. So, and I agree with that whole, the park, it needs to be in connection with this area too, not way to the side. So I know that's where it was designated, but somehow this green space needs to expand out and that connection and the residential. And it could be more, a little hardscape, too, but, you know, a parma nod and all that kind of stuff, but get that parking off the, off the river and add that buffer, so. And I'll be writing comments, too, but thank you.
Thank you. I see the folks from Shelter furiously taking notes over here. Anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't spoken? Any other comments?
She had a question.
Real quick, comment.
Just so we can keep it on to the record, do we need to come?
I walk the, the Riverfront Trail. I, I don't know if that's what it's called.
I need you to state your name once again.
Lori Young, live at the Towns at Riverfront. I walk that trail a couple times a day with my dogs, and there's a huge homeless population down there. That's something I don't know if the planning commission addresses or the city council, but it's, and there's, I don't know about the other neighborhood, but there's a huge homeless theft. They steal our Amazon packages, and it's, it's a huge problem, and I think it is going to get worse in the summer, where there, there's actual camps down there. So that's something that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. All right, do we have any follow-up?
I'd like to have some questions for the developer, if your engineering staff is here or anyone.
Who can address the challenging foundation situation there? Specifically, I'm interested in how much settling you expect to be happening around the buildings that isn't, the parts that aren't pile-supported?
Yeah, Eric Evans again from Shelter Holdings. To just jump right into question, appreciate all the input. We're here to listen, and we are listening. With respect to the settlement, the residents who've been out there probably have seen some of the equipment that we had out there. We did a series of borings on the property in November, September, to assess how the buildings would, that we're proposing here would, how the piles would be supported. There's been a tremendous amount of geotechnical evaluation on the property, both by ourselves prior to us with IKEA. I think there are over 1,000 boring logs on the property. To answer your question directly, 21 inches to 26 inches is the range of settlement that's anticipated over the next 70 years. Some of the work that you did was to, and some of you may remember, there was a large surcharge fill material that was placed on the site to try to induce settlement. As a landfill, all of the garbage needed to be compressed. Below the garbage, there's also compressible soils, as Alan mentioned, there's bog, peat material, sand, and then eventually there's bearing sand. So the large fill that was placed on the site and left for a very long period of time was intended to consolidate all those soils and reduce the amount of settlement to approximately three feet. As the site sat for, after that, and Oliver McCollum hadn't proceeded anything, we started monitoring the site for the next five years while we were trying to perfect IKEA, and during that process, we were able to evaluate how the site was functioning after the surcharge was removed, and the settlement ranges are in that, really as little as six inches where the soils aren't as, there is as much refuse, to as much as that 26 inches. The buildings and the concepts that are here, I don't know if there's a way to get to image.
Which, which one would you like, Eric?
Any building, or our last slide, I guess our slide, whatever is easy.
Let's see.
That one's fine, right there. So all of the buildings themselves are supported by piles. The buildings are located in an area, they're tried to, to be in a strategic area. The piles go down as much as 85 feet. So these are very deep piles to get through all of the refuse and the, what is some of that sand material, eventually to the bearing material. They are on approximately 20-foot centers. They are, they have to be supported between them, so there are grade beams that run in between the piles, so it's a network of piles. We anticipate that those piles actually will extend beyond, and the grade beams will extend beyond the buildings and out in front of the walk, in front of the buildings, both in the back and the front, so that the walkways that you would experience as you shop, as you stop into the amenity center, would be at the same grade of the building and wouldn't settle. But as you transition outside, we have to accommodate the grade from that settlement and from the rest of the site that will, over time, incur that settlement. It's not something that happens instantaneously. Because of the surcharge, because of the characteristics of the refuse, the settlement over time is in increments, so it's anticipated that we may only see a couple inches in the first four or five years. In 10 years, we might only see half of it. So part of the design has to accommodate planning for the relationships of the grades, the parking lots for that settlement. And as you might imagine, with the roads that you work and drive on, they don't have a life expectancy of 100 years. We have to resurface the asphalt after so many years. So part of the structure here is, as we look at these parking areas, that the lifespan of the asphalt won't be as long as the settlement. So it's when we come back to resurface the parking areas, we'll be able to adjust the grades and then make those transitions. It's very, I'm sorry, we've been studying it for years, so it's real quick for us.
That's true. I, I have done pilings in this area, so I'm familiar with this situation.
So the, the other nuance here, just to be clear, because the, the site's contaminated, so the refuse is actually, when water penetrates through, it runs into what's, to a shallow aquifer, and that aquifer is currently collected by a perimeter leachate system. So the consent decree has provisions that they don't want water added to the landfill. So when you think about plants, not only are you concerned about, you know, trees, potentially settling, as Alan mentioned, you're also worried about adding water and adding to what is a contaminated shallow aquifer. So we aren't allowed to irrigate, except for establishing the landscaping, until, as part of the consent decree, in fact, we're in some ways prohibited from doing it. So all of the irrigation that we use to irrigate the softscapes that you see here actually has to be collected. It can't be allowed to penetrate through the landfill. It has to be discharged to the storm system and bypass the landfill, which makes, trying to incorporate the park area and the dog area within the landfill very problematic, because it really can't be irrigated, it's intended not to be, by the nature of the landfill.
Yeah, I looked at your piling report because I realized it was a challenging site.
Yeah. The other nuance here is we're, we're, because we're going from a shallow aquifer all the way down to a deep aquifer, we have to make sure that when we drive that pile, we don't allow water to travel down that pile, collect contaminants, go past the, the child, the dirty aquifer all the way to the deep aquifer. So the pile configuration is actually two piles. It's a driven steel shaft for the, for the duration of the refuse, and then a pile within the shaft that we drive all the way down to the bearing soil and pull back up and pour a pile all the way up, and in so doing, we don't bring any refuse out, and at the same time, we maintain that separation between the shallow and the deep aquifer.
So, is this?
So one way, maybe I can jump to a question. So why not do a parking garage?
No, no, I completely, I was not going to ask you that question. I completely understood the car, parking garage. But what I'm curious about is the drainage. Is it being treated in the same treatment facility as this leaching? I mean, so I would imagine drainage on this site is a massive challenge as well.
So there's a lot of good work that was done by the staff and through the consent decree, through the consultants. So all of the stormwater is planned to be essentially bypassed. It's collected, and it is, the plans anticipate stormwater filter cartridges that then go to outfalls that then discharge to wetlands and out to the stream. So all that stormwater planning, the sizing of the outfall, that's essentially been planned and accommodated and thought through with the EISs all those years. It, it is a challenge because a lot of places we work, we don't think about, we can't let the water go into the ground. We, we, we collect the surface streets, they go into catch basins, they go into storm vaults, and then they're discharged. Here, because we're so close to the river for some of the very reasons that Mr. Alexander, I think, mentioned, we do have to discharge fairly quickly to the river so we, so we get it out, and, and also because of the consent decree, they don't want ponds on the landfill. So yeah, so it's challenging.
So once it's built, though, maintaining that infrastructure, and I'm not talking about the building infrastructure, but the drainage infrastructure and this leaching infrastructure, that's the responsibility of the city, correct?
So the public road, Riverfront Boulevard, which a number of the Eclipse Mill town homeowners are very anxious to have done, that is a public road, and that, those, that road will have public infrastructure. As you leave public road, you'll enter into the mix. As you leave the public road, you'll enter into the mixed-use shopping district. And that will be owned privately by the mixed-use shopping district and maintained privately. It will connect to the road, and then that pathway will all be public through the public infrastructure.
Any other questions?
I want to ask a question, change the topic a little bit.
Before you do, 2,700 parking stalls.
Oh, perfect, okay. I was going to ask about parking and traffic again, and I just kind of wanted to get, looking at this site, I imagine anybody, a developer even, would look at this and say, there are some challenges, given that there is just one main access on one side and more, somewhat more minor access on the other. So when you're developing these plans and putting this all together, I imagine that's something that you guys have thought about and is concerning. What is your view on the idea, just from the business perspective, of the traffic challenges and parking challenges here? And I'm just thinking of the idea that, okay, we're going to, we want to build shops, we want people to live here, we want people to, merchants to come in and rent our spaces. But it could affect your business if the traffic is such that nobody wants to come here, say, hey, I'd love, these are great apartments, but I'm not going to fight that traffic. I don't want to pay the rent to live there. So I'm just curious to hear your perspective on, from challenges with parking and traffic.
We brought our architect, we brought our director of construction, we brought our owner, we brought our corporate counsel. I'm sorry, I didn't bring the traffic engineer today. We brought our civil engineer. But I would encourage everyone, it's on the website. We did a, we did a traffic study. It has some very good information. I would say, and I'm not trying to belittle anybody's concern, there has been a tremendous amount of planning for the traffic here, for the Riverfront. When you think about what was originally planned for the amount of retail shopping and the amount of housing that was in different fashions than the townhomes and the single family when it was originally planned, there was a lot of effort done to accommodate what we're proposing. So we work all over, Oregon, Washington. We're a local family-owned business. We've been doing this for, some of us for decades. This isn't, traffic is always a concern where we work, but there's been so much good planning, and please read the traffic analysis. We'll bring the traffic study gentleman, the professional from 10W, who is part of the original EIS, who's done all the work, and be able to specifically, after you've had a chance to digest it, look at it. But the short answer is, from a professional standpoint, no, that concern isn't here. What, what we, when we started here, we were asked to try to bring that large destination retailer, the IKEA, to try to perfect the vision that Oliver McMillan candidly couldn't. We were, we had them here driving the project, and the economic reality of retail has changed significantly. And even the behemoth of IKEA came to the conclusion to go a different direction. And so when we came back to reposition the property to try to accomplish some of the things that people were looking for, that specialty grocer, that theater, that the shopping, the pedestrian experience, that engaging entire, in entertainment environment, we came back with, we really need to get at a vibrant 24-hour presence. These shops to survive need to have a captive audience above them, that they will come down and grab groceries at 9:00 PM and sustain them. And so we have specialty grocers that will not locate unless there are 3,000 people within a half-mile radius of their store. So we're trying to overcome that economic reality of retail and bring, thank you for coming, and bring kind of that vibrancy that was originally anticipated. And the housing is how we get there. It is what supports these little small shops. And one of the questions was about the retail versus the amenity. Some of this retail, we are going to have to nurture, nurture. We're going to have to nurse along. And how we do that is, we instill enough housing to support it and draw that little pub growler, that little wine club, and draw them in. And hopefully, over time, our amenity space becomes that vibrant retail space and grows. And we keep moving it along and growing. The original traffic study anticipates, that we provided, anticipates 230,000 square feet of retail. And we hope that we'll get there. But it'll be time over, over many phases. And we work in a lot of developments where we really do need to adapt to, if it turns out there's more interest from seniors to be here, to be at the theater, to be close to the three-acre park, to take their grandkids there, we may need to shift the mix a little bit and offer a different type of product. So part of the reason why this is phased is not only to adapt to the market, but also to adapt to kind of the retail environment. We may find that there's a strong medical office use right now. But as it gets established, it'll draw other businesses. And we'll incrementally continue to improve the center as we go.
Since you're here talking about this, I'm curious what you think, based on your current projections of absorption rates, what do you think the build-out would be for this?
The mayor and then the residents said hurry up, our neighborhood meeting. So the roadway design for Riverfront Boulevard has been submitted to the city. It is currently under review. It includes all the methane collection, it includes the median islands you see there, it includes the sidewalks, it includes all the landscaping on both sides. We would like to be in a position to start that road in the summer months. The pilings, as you noted, are very complicated. They're not to be done in the winter. There will be materials generated out of the driving the shafts. We're trying to be in a position to start those in the summer of this year. We think that if we start this, this year, we would be able to open the theater and the restaurants by April of 2021. And that our intent would be, and we shared this at the neighborhood meeting, this schedule, that every year from there on out, we would attempt to try to open another phase. So Phase Two, which would follow in April 2022, and Phase Three, and so on. And in that way, too, we'll allow some residents to get established, some businesses get established, and not have the people who move into the first buildings decide, gee, that next building looks better, and lose all the momentum we've had.
Thank you.
Commissioner Finch, did you have a question?
I do, and thank you for being here tonight, for your enthusiasm and for your contemplated investment and effort. Will you break down the components of the Phase One program as far as use types?
Sure. So if we could go to the site plan. What we heard on clear from the residents is, we want the specialty grocer store first phase at the front end. When we talk to, and maybe the architectural image of the grocery, when we talk to the grocer that we've been nurturing along, they really want to be seen coming in down 41st. So as you come in, the intent is to position that specialty grocer right there as you enter. The site plan was designed so that you could spill out from the grocer, that you could grab a sandwich and come out and sit. So if you look at, when you get a chance with the site plan, these buildings are set back quite a ways, in some cases over 15 feet from the street. So there are lots of opportunities for shops to spill out, for you to come out of the grocery store and sit down on a bench, gather with friends, enjoy coffee, and then press, press forward. As you move past the grocer, this building has approximately 75 residences in it. There is ground floor retail. It has what we think will be, I don't have it memorized. I think in these all four buildings, there's approximately a capacity for 40,000 square feet of retail. Of that, we're not sure the market will be there right away. So we're reserving really 10,000 square feet increments that will try to affect retail, that we might cut up into multiple spaces. Maybe it's a wine shop, maybe it's a dog pet store, just those that we can draw. So each of these four buildings, approximately 10,000 square feet of actual retail. As you get to the theater, this corner right there in front of the theater, we feel like it's pretty easy to attract a nice restaurant. And there's lots of room to spill out again here, right onto the public plaza. It's hard, not everybody can read a plan and understand the relationships. These are almost 250 feet across in space. So this is a very, very large public plaza. So there's lots of room to hold that holiday market and still spill out onto the restaurant. The theater is currently shown as 45,000 square feet. The theater we were talking to, a couple of them, but the one that seems to be closest to getting to the finish line, is about 45,000 to 60,000 square feet. On this side, as I said, we, kind of the restaurant shops that would front the theater. As we turn inside, if we go back, again, at the corner, probably another, I mean, a few people buy their candy and their movie candy not at the theater. And there might be somebody who would want to open a candy shop or those types of, small wine bar, that type of ice cream shop at that corner. If we go to the back, one of the things that's a challenge here for a building, putting parking under it, would be very problematic. One, we wouldn't be able to get the retail. And two, when you think about settlement, now you want to think about a car settling as you try to get in. So it's really, it's really not practical for us to do that. What that does, though, it gives us a front and back door in a way that we don't normally get. A lot of times when we do mid-rise buildings, and Jeff and Gary do a lot of these in the city, we're stuck with somewhere we got to put the garage door. We don't have that condition here. So it allows us to plan amenity space on the backside, that, so we have kind of two front doors. And when we come back the next time in March, we'll show you kind of the thought process of the pedestrian pathways and how they, we want them to feel and protected. But that's part of what's nice about this site from my perspective, is that there's two sides to this. One, it needs to feel great for the residents who are parking, as well as the retail on the back, coming, they want to come into the retail, want to come into the residence. And also, when you walk by along the front edge, it has to feel great as you're walking along Riverfront Boulevard.
One follow-up question is, thinking about public benefit and quality of place, how would this development stand out as uniquely Everett from an aesthetic standpoint? You know, honor the history of the sites, not the tire fire so much, but maybe some interviews. So it doesn't end up looking like you could be anywhere.
So when we went out to the neighborhood and our neighborhood meeting, what we heard from a number of the community is, give it a historic, authentic character. And I don't, I think one resident told me, Everett's gritty, make it gritty. Didn't want to necessarily do that, but the eclectic character, the industrial character was kind of what was conveyed to us. So from that standpoint, and even some of the roof forms mirroring some of the airplane wings, we're geared to try to draw out some of that character. The material palette is also more of a rust, a metal, a character that kind of cohesively tries to fit into the industrial character of history that it was. So from the standpoint of Everett, this, this has, there aren't normally 70-acre sites that have no context on which to go by. So this is a little bit of placemaking to get there. And so having that, a little bit of that industrial character, those materials, and fronting it on those public plazas, central plazing area, trying to give it, if you look at the public plaza, it's shown as kind of a dry riverbed, to try to draw out that river character. So the scoring on the pavement is on the plan. For those of you who were worried about, and I'm moving fast here for time, respect people's time, but for those of you worried about the speed, the intent was to try to raise the pedestrian pathway across Riverfront Boulevard as kind of an elevated platform, to slow down traffic and to encourage people to go back and forth. And you can see the, the Riverfront theme, character of the scoring on the concrete. The islands there that you're seeing that are essentially planners again, are intended to be kind of reminiscent of pools along a stream or a river, where you might see a collection of wood or debris or planting. So, and interesting places to stop. And so those are some of the character that the professional team has kind of drew out of the neighborhood meeting and tried to implement here.
Thank you.
So I actually have a quick question, because that was a great segue when you were talking about, you know, industrial context, Everett being kind of gritty. And that goes to the concern that I-
That wasn't my turn.
Hey, hey, I love Durham, North Carolina, and they say, they have a big bumper sticker that says, keep it dirty Durham. So anyways, going to that context, because I think it really is key, that's my concern about the retail space. Retail is our number-one tax dollar generator. And so my question, and it might be way too late in the gate to even look at this, should we, and I don't know if it's possible because of the development agreement and all these other things, is there a way to introduce more flexibility for you guys? Because I know that makerspace is becoming more popular, these niche markets where people are actually doing handcraft-type things. Because I think retail is next to, I mean, and I'm, I don't know, but it seems like it is an uphill battle at this point. Unfortunately, it is the number-one way, because policy does not keep pace with, you know, big cultural and social changes, it is the number-one way we generate tax revenue. And so that's the concern that I have, and it is strictly from a land use perspective. I understand that city council will be struggling with this. But, but is there, is there a way to entertain making these, this retail square footage that you're talking about more flexible so that it is easier to get people into the buildings?
We, we would like nothing better than to see our amenity space turned into paying retail customers. We have 230,000 square feet available. I think there is a potential for more. What we were told and coached, and it's part of who we are, is don't overpromise. The city went through that twice, three times on this property.
Yeah, we have a little bit of a complex.
So what we've come forward is what we can deliver. We feel we can deliver a theater, we can deliver a grocery store. We feel that the market today is 125,000 square feet. We feel like we can grow it to 230 over time, and there may be capacity to do more. But at this time, if you're asking us what's realistic and what is possible, we're not trying to set an expectation that can't be met. I don't know if that helps you.
So with the theater and the specialty grocery store, is that community-driven? Or is that, did you cast your net and see, you know, who you could get? Because I, my worry when I look at Phase One is I see a theater and a specialty grocery store sort of anchoring that phase. And locally, I don't have a context for a particularly successful theater. I see, you know, the Everett Mall has a theater, but you know, that's sort of in an established urban environment and people, it's just sort of served by convenience, I guess. In other areas, I'm thinking like Stanwood, Washington, has a small community movie theater. And initially, it was, it succeeded, but you know, the, it experienced decline because it just couldn't sustain that. And then I see the grocery store and I think, well, you know, maybe if it was Trader Joe's, maybe if it was QFC, maybe if it was something. But you know, we've experienced downtown a specialty grocery store that went in and it just didn't make it. And again, it was in this established urban fabric. And you know, if it couldn't make it there, I'm wondering how it's going to make it down here. There is housing, but- There is housing, but is that the thing that's gonna, sorry, my phone's weighing in too. Um, I just want to, I want to know what's generating those two choices and how they're going to really hold it together in that first phase until we get more.
Yeah, so, um, it's both. Um, what we heard from the community is they want those specialty products, the, the things you can't get at, um, Target, for example. We had, um, really three grocers that we were chasing. One of them, for them to offer those kind of specialty project products, the, the, the meals, the, the take-in, take-out type of thing, they, they need to be a bigger footprint. They need to be 30,000 square feet. So, um, it, that's for them to offer that kind of variety of product. We would be more than happy with a 30,000-square-foot grocer. Um, we reached out to all of the cast of characters that, that you and the community asks us to do. This reflects the highest probability of success for that specialty grocer. It has the best ability to capture the character coming in as well as the pedestrian experience. We think there will be people who walk from Overlook and Simpson and Eclipse to this, who, who will be riding on the trail and want to come up. And there is a connection from the Riverfront Trail up to the Central Plaza that you could then come and grab your coffee and go and throw the ball with your dog at the three-acre park. But, um, if you're asking, um, the, the likelihood of the 15,000-square-foot grocery store that, um, is consistent with the type of groceries you're talking about is the ones we've been talking to. The theater, um, is, um, is a changing business, just like a lot of retail. And it's much more experiential now. Um, you know, not only are they reclining seats, the seats sway and they put out smoke. So the investment for them is very significant, um, and, um, to open a new theater. And so that, that is kind of the destination entertainment evolution that the theater is talking about here.
So it, can you give us the name of the, of the theater who's interested at this point, so we can get a little bit more background on their, their formula, their dynamic there?
I can't.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's worth asking.
Yeah. I don't know, did we miss any other questions?
Eric, could you, uh, could you mention the temporary road that will be available to the towns?
So, um, so, um, there was originally a emergency access road through, uh, the property. The fire chief could drive to the roundabout, uh, in his fire truck on a temporary access road to 36th and, uh, access the Eclipse Mill property owners. It, um, under the consent decree, it's not allowed to have public access. It's only for emergency purposes. And there's a reason for that. Right now, there aren't methane collection, there's a perimeter methane collection, but there isn't a methane collection system under the entirety of the landfill. So DOE wants to prevent people from being on the landfill without those preventative measures. When, uh, the Eclipse Mill townhome owners came and wanted to be free of the train, excuse me, um, delay, um, we worked with William Lyon and to try to come up with an interim solution to help. One of the points that, um, hasn't been made, in addition, because of the concerns about being away from refuse, um, there's been about five feet of additional fill placed on the landfill. There are large stockpiles currently at the triangle portion that will eventually get spread over the entirety of the landfill. And about 170,000 yards have been placed to bring everything up, be further removed from the, the, the river, uh, in elevation. That exercise also had a, a plan approved by the city in that grading exercise to build a temporary access road that is, that will be south, that is south of the future construction of Riverfront Boulevard. That road, um, got approved through Department of Ecology and approved, um, to allow the residents of Eclipse Mill to use on a temporary basis. It has to be fenced. It, we did, uh, methane collection readings that in that area, there are not significant methane exposures. Um, and that road has been built. It is, uh, essentially, a few signs have to be placed on it in terms of speed, um, and it is available. But before that happens, um, somebody has to sign a, a, a release, uh, because obviously you're driving across our property and we need to be sure that we know who it is that's driving on the property, be consistent with the consent decree, but also to be sure that, um, um, there's insurance, just as if somebody was driving across your front yard. That paperwork is with the Eclipse Mill Townhome Lower Association, and I, we just haven't got it back yet. And once we get that back, um, and the city signs off that we got the signs in the right spot, um, then the road, temporary access road would be available. It was placed in a way so that we could build Riverfront Boulevard while this was going on, so that, um, we could hurry up and get after Riverfront Boulevard and maintain that interim access. It's really only intended for when the train blocks it, because it's actually pretty easy to get to Pacific when there isn't a train. But, um, that's really the only use. If we start in June on the main road with your support, uh, we think it's about a year. So in June of, um, 2020, the road will be done, the main Riverfront Boulevard has been done, and the residents would be able to travel on Riverfront Boulevard as planned. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Well, I think at this point, we've-
I just wanted to say, my name's Gary Young, the co-founder of Shelter Holdings, and, um, I just wanted to thank everyone tonight for, for all the input that we received and for the, for the interest. We're very excited about this project, and we've been working for a long, long time. And I just wanted to give a few assurances. We're, we're very committed to this community. We've been very actively participating in the community with the construction of the new Y facility. We financially are supporting a number of endeavors. We've been participating actively with Housing Hope in the new program that's going on. We're very interested in the transportation links and, and bringing the connectivity points through Everett Transit here to this property and helping to, uh, be part of the solution as we're all, we all struggle no matter where we go now with traffic. It's just, it doesn't matter where you are. And so now it's all about how to be extremely thoughtful and progressive in terms of how we plan and proceed ahead. And, uh, we also very active with Village Theater Issaquah here in Everett and for the youth programs. We're, we're excited about, Everett has been a steady process of building blocks, which are really quite exceptional when you look at Shaq and, and how that, uh, art facility has evolved and expanded. And so when you look at our opportunity for our retail, um, we'll have opportunities with space, there'll be vacant space that we want to energize and create opportunities where we can bring some of the parts of the community downtown, maybe help have a subsidiary for Shaq to have some experiential work. I, we do a lot of nonprofit work with a lot of different organizations, uh, personally, myself, my partner, our time, to help deal with the other components of a society that are so essential, education and all the, the pieces that make this thing work. And so I just wanted to share that. Um, we are just humbly proceeding ahead. This is a very challenging property, but we have been in business for a long time and have built on a lot of challenging properties. And maybe some people will ask, why would you do this? But, um, it's very exciting and it's also a tremendous opportunity. So I just would like you to know that we, um, we share this passion. We know the city has spent a huge amount of money and there's been a great deal of expectation for this, so we want to be thoughtful, careful, and we're, we're asking for the support as we are trying to navigate this road. Staff has been incredible. The city is extremely, uh, well-staffed and talented and, and, and these are the important things, that, that we're working with a really strong team, I think, on all levels, from the team that we've assembled, the team that exists here, and all the contributions you as volunteers and everybody that's moving into the community. To be successful, we have to really answer every one of these questions that's been raised tonight. If we stumble on the first round and, and we do have major problems, then we all lose. So it's really important to be thoughtful and proceed, and I just want you to know that's where we're coming from. Thank you.
That's a nice note to end the meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Sorry to make it longer.
Yeah, that was great.